Good evening, and welcome to the March 12th, 2024 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate Item I for matters that are germane to City Council if the item you wish to speak to is not on the agenda. Light system is three minutes. After stating your name and address, the green light will appear. After two minutes, the yellow light will appear. After three minutes, the red light will appear, and we ask that you take your seat. The City Code identifies the procedure for participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on matters that are germane to council. Matters that are germane to council means matters that the City Council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, organization, to include campaign information. Copies of this ordinance can be found at the desk in the lobby. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Pastor Kevin Swan with Ivy Baptist Church provide invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilwoman Vic will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is the practice of council to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but would under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before I pray, I'd like to take a moment to thank Mayor Jones and the City Council for your support and presence of our three-on-three event for middle school students that took place this past Saturday. Thank you. Let us bow our heads, please. Gracious God, our Father, we honor and thank you for this moment. We thank you for the institution of government that which you have created. We thank you for these elected officials, and we also pray for our city employees. We pray now your presence would be upon this meeting. We pray for order and unity amongst everyone present. We pray for clear direction going forward from the council that will be of benefit and service to all members and residents of the City of Newport News. And so, we thank you for this time, and we ask it all in the name of each of us who we serve individually, but for me personally as Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Can you please drum in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think as they filter in, so we have a very special group of people in our audience. I am honored, as they come in, to recognize members of the 2023-2024 Mayor's Youth Commission. Newport News has more than 300 citizens who serve on nearly 45 boards and commissions, but the Mayor's Youth Commission is one of my favorites. Members of this commission will join us throughout the school year, observing our City Council meetings, and learning more about the civic engagement process. I would like to ask these students and their advisors to please stand and be recognized. We are happy to have you here with us and look forward to partnering with you to welcome your fresh ideas and talents as we build forward together in Newport News. Moving on to public hearings. Page three, Item One is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a deed of easement by and between the City of Newport News and Dominion Energy for an easement across city-owned property located at 1001 Baptist Road in York County. The easement is needed to locate overhead and underground service lines across the bulk property to supply utilities to a new subdivision in York County known as Rose Hill. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ealing?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Page thirteen, Item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to make offers to acquire by voluntary sale or condemnation portions of real property located at 160 Corinthia Drive and 162 Corinthia Drive for the Barksdale Drainage Improvement Project. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Move it up.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ealing?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Item E3 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a deed of easement by and between the City of Newport News and Dominion Energy Virginia for an easement across city-owned property located at 1608 Ivy Avenue as part of the CNI Ivy Avenue Reconstruction Project. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following item. Page thirty-three, Minutes of the Special Meeting, February 7th and 8th, 2024. Page sixty-five, Minutes of the Work Session of February 27th, 2024. Page eighty-eight, Minutes of the Regular Meeting, February 27th, 2024. Motion to approve the consent agenda, Item F1 through F3, all-inclusive.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, Other City Council Actions. Page 122, Item G1. Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of City Council. Item G1 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a regional mutual aid agreement for fire and rescue services. This agreement is among sixteen jurisdictions within the Hampton Roads region and will allow them to work together during emergency events. The agreement defines the responsibilities of the Newport News Fire Department and other participating jurisdictions in providing equipment, personnel, and services to any point within the geographical boundaries of the others' jurisdictions. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I wanted to ask. Have we enlarged the group? Are there more people in it now than there were?
I'll ask Acting Chief Wesley Rogers to address that question, but-
I know we've had these agreements before.
Yes, too. So, before I get ahead of myself.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, ma'am. This agreement just adds in a couple more jurisdictions on the South Side that we're not in the original agreement.
But all the rest of them have been with us.
Yes, ma'am. They've been with us for the start.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Woodbury. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Appropriations. Page 144, Item H. Mr. Manager.
We have two appropriations this evening. The first appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $120,000 from the local criminal justice training academy fund to support Newport News Police Department training. The criminal justice fund is used to support the majority of the Newport News Police Training requirements, which range from cellular forensic analysis, TASER, drone pilot, and motor carrier recertification schools, and includes leadership development classes. Additionally, the fund supports civilian training for topics such as computer security, crime analysis training, public safety dispatch expertise, and recertification for instructor and emergency management dispatch. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve Item H1 and H2. Oops, sorry.
Yeah.
Are you good, Ellen?
I'm good.
Okay.
Are we doing both of them?
Yeah. Yes, we're doing both.
Okay.
I should have saved my recommendation.
Okay.
If you allow me, I'll read the second.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. The second appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $3,489,024 of additional fiscal year 2024 street and highway maintenance state revenue to the Department of Public Works for residential street reconstruction and resurfacing contracts. The total to be received from the state fiscal year 2024 for street maintenance is $23,56,162. The increase is estimated at $3,489,024 over the current budget. It is requested that the additional funding be appropriated for residential road construction and resurfacing. Now, I recommend approval of the appropriations.
Sounds good. Now, do we have a motion to approve Item H1 and H2, all-inclusive?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Item I, Citizen Comments on Matters Germane to City Council. I will call each name in the order it appears in front of me. Patrick Dooley.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Dooley. I live at 1693 Monterey Place, and I'd like to speak today in support of a permanent and ceasefire resolution, and I stand with two-thirds of Americans that support a ceasefire resolution. And in the wake of the October 7th, Israel slaughtered more than 30,000 Palestinians and displaced about 2 million people in Gaza, as we watch these events unfold live on social media. I believe it is in the best interest of us, of Newport News as a city, to stand in solidarity with its Palestinian community and to make sure that Newport News stands as a safe place for all, whether your, whatever your identity is. Thank you, and that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Haley?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I do have, I'm originally Barbara Futro. I just got married, so that's why my last name is different. But y'all, my face might look familiar to a lot of y'all because the first, the last time I was in front of y'all, it was my child got assaulted by his teacher. Well, I'm in front of y'all again because that same child got assaulted for the second time. I had a couple, I have a couple videos. I tried to reach out to you, sir, Mr. Jones, and to the superintendent, Dr. Mitchell. I have those emails on my phone that she's not taking it as seriously, but I have a video of a teacher putting her hands around a child's mouth and nose in front of a whole class of students. The students thought it was funny. The child was humiliated, put his head on the desk when she was done. She took her hand, I guess it had snot on it or whatever, and she wiped it on the back of his shirt. I'm bringing that to y'all's attention because last time, when that teacher got hurt, y'all made a big deal about that. But what about the children that are getting hurt by these teachers and these staff members? And I'm bringing also in front of y'all that Ms. Felicia Barnett, and I'm calling her name out because she is aware of all the problems, the fighting at Dozier, and I'm saying that because that's the school my daughter goes through. My daughter was recently in a terrible car accident with me. She has a concussion. My mom has gone to the school and showed them proof, and I have a recording of us sitting down with the principal and my child, and my child crying out to the principal that she's scared of these girls and they're trying to jump her. They keep circling her. They keep sending threats through Facebook and through Friends. My daughter does not feel safe going to the school where she has to learn at. How can we learn if we don't feel safe in that environment? So, we brought this to the principal's attention two days before the incident occurred. The principal, the principal and the security guard stood in me and my mom's face and promised us that they would come up with a safety plan, even if it required the security guard walking my daughter to each class five minutes before the bell rung. Two days later, I get a text from my daughter of fear. "Mom, I'm scared. Come get me. The girls are pinning up their hair. They're sending girls to tell me they're about to jump me." I go to the school. I go to get my child. As soon as I get there, the lunch bell is ringing. In the hallway, the girls are circling my daughter. I run over there, grab my daughter, take her to the office. Security was right there watching, and I would love to present to you the videos that I have because they're very concerning. They're very alarming, and I would like to reach out to the, reach out to all of us because it takes one, as a community, to make this situation better.
Thank you.
Our kids do not feel safe.
It's the red light. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
May I have an appointment with you, though, sir?
We'll talk afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
It's mostly a school issue, which is a separate thing, but we can talk afterwards.
Well, actually, it's a criminal because my son was, it was classified as abuse on Class Three from the, from the teacher.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lily and Robinson?
Hello again.
Good to see you.
All right. This is going to be short, Mayor Jones. I told him to tell you. Request it. Request it. First of all, my name is Lily Robinson, and I want to thank all of y'all. You right there, too, the troublemaker, and you, Mayor Jones, for coming and doing what you did. You are the best mayor I ever seen in my 78 years.
Strong team.
Other than Jesse, Jesse Riley and stuff. So, what I'm asking you for now, did you show each member of these pictures of me at that new lift and ride, that beautiful building that they built over across town and everything, and let them know what's going on over there and what we're suffering and why they got me on the second floor? Second of all and stuff, I got a permit and everything to do my case and take it to HUD. I'm getting in touch with Bobby Scott. I've been over his office three times. We need Congressman Scott. Martha Price and stuff, when I went up there to the General Assembly in January and stuff, she got her team on me. So, I will be going to Richmond. But I'm asking y'all, every last one, and I know what you can do. You got empathy. You are a wonderful man, and I know I have worried you to death. God knows, I look at your face sometime when you look at me and stuff, and I be just snappin'. But you have been patient. You are a wonderful mayor. You're going to go places. And one thing about it, I will be voting for you this time.
I appreciate it.
I will be. Because I know who I need to vote for, and my children, grandchildren need it. So, all I'm asking y'all, when I get in touch with Tommy Scott and everything, for y'all to send HUD in there and see what's going on in downtown Newport News. You done did great. Christmas time, you, teach you, the kids had a beautiful Christmas. And you put a nix down there and everything. So, what I'm asking y'all and stuff, when HUD come through there and stuff, you need to check on how they building these new places, shout and stuff. Don't even finish it, just like Martha Corrigan in 2013, half-built. Our building haven't been touched in the front since we moved in there and everything. And I want to thank y'all again, but I will be back in touch with y'all. I won't be over here and stuff because my woman-wife's wheelchair got to go to Richmond. So, I thank you and stuff. And the last thing that I ask, because all of y'all, I hope y'all seen these pictures of me struggling, that garbage and stuff from Christmas and everything and all that, and me not being able to function on the second floor and the rest of them with the wine and all the shouting stuff. But the last thing I need y'all for, because y'all need money. Y'all need money for Congressmen to put money in downtown Newport News, build up them places, the moting and all them places. Those church buildings down there on 78th Street, let the people take it over. Let them get some moting and stuff for the kids to fix it up and everything because they're going to be suffering this summer and everything because they don't have no pool and everything is going building up, hunting and stuff. And the last thing that y'all can do, this is it.
Okay.
Piglet Wiggly.
Okay.
I am locked out from Piglet Wiggly because they stealing baskets. I have to sit outside and wait.
It's a red light, man. We'll take, I will, I will take care of it. David's right there. He will take care of it. I can promise you.
David, you dragging me out?
No.
But no, I need y'all to get on Piglet Wiggly now.
Okay. Well, I'm on it, ma'am. I'm on it. Thank you so much.
All right. And thank all of y'all, troublemaker, Mayor Jones?
Thank you.
Ms. Big, I done dealt with you last year.
Thank you.
And I love you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank y'all.
Yes, ma'am.
Please do that, and I will be calling you about Piglet Wiggly.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Sorry, Ms. Levon Futro?
Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have custody of my granddaughter. She's 14. She's been going to Ella Fritz Gerald since the sixth grade. She's never been in any trouble, never been in any fight since she's been in school, and I've had her since she was one. And I'm talking about my daughter's daughter, who I have custody of, okay? Now, this started in February. My, my granddaughter was in a real bad car accident with her mother. She has a head injury. I went to the school and I stressed to them, I took the doctor's lips, that she had a head injury. So, they was like, okay, Ms. Futro, we got that. And I did stress that girls was trying to jump her. They don't like her for some reason. I don't know. But she got suspended from school because she was surrounded around five girls, and she lashed out in school. When you're being bullied, you get tired and you frustrated. So, being that I was up at the school when all of this was going on, and I pulled my daughter, my granddaughter out, they banned me from all the Newport News schools. I have 19 grandchildren, and I go to every school and I volunteer in the classes, especially when if my grand, one of my grandchildren is acting out, the schools call me. Nelson calls me all the time. I go in there and I sit all day in there and I help the teachers. So, to be banned from school at 62, when I haven't done anything, I'm really upset about that. And to see that the schools know that they have on Instagram a page called Ella Fritz Fight, Fight Page. I went on that page, and after the school told me when my granddaughter comes back, she will be safe there. I went on that page. I watched that principal over Ella Fritz Gerald stand there while kids are fighting, and the security guard is standing there as well, and these kids are fighting, and, and the principal is doing this. So, when I did address that, she said to me, "Ms. Futro, we're not allowed to stop fights." So then, I showed her two other fights. She said, "The teachers don't stop fights, just security." I showed her that where security wasn't stopping. Then, I showed her a fight where this young black guy was beating up this, this young black, this young white boy, and the white teacher snatched him off of him and kind of tossed him over. Then, I watched these two black girls fighting, walking with the teacher, and the teacher turned her back on that. So, something has to be done in these schools. I'm feared for my granddaughter, to send her back to that school.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. So, I want to hear from you. I did email you, and I sent you some of the videos.
Okay. Yeah, I think my staff has it in the back. They'll, they'll reach out.
Ma'am, excuse me. Have you been to the school board?
Yes, I have.
And told them?
I did. I've been to them, and that is why I decided to email Mayor Jones to see what kind of assistance that I can get for my granddaughter. I don't want her there with them pulling out her hair. She's not a fighter. My granddaughter gets up an hour before school. She changes her clothes five times in the morning before she can get out the door. She, she's not a fighter. She's scared to fight. And to be surrounded by all these girls is no winning. You can't beat them. These are some rough kids. At this point, I want to take her out of school because I'm scared to send her back because, like I told them, if my granddaughter's up there, you ban me. What, you going to put me in jail? Because I'm going to that school to make sure she's safe. If they jump me, because I've already told, they would beat me up.
Okay.
So, I want to make sure. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Angela Harris?
Here we go again. It's so sad that we are in 2024, and we're having the same problems that I was having with my children by being- by being bust out of our community up the road to Saunders Elementary. So I understand what you're talking about, sister. In every school, they have a community engagement person that works for you. Find out who that person is and let them work for you. Call your governor. Call your governor. Well, chat again.
We'll do, we'll do the comments directed toward.
Chat again. Use my name if you need to. My name Angela Harris, and I am the living last one of the two thousand two write-in candidacy of Newport News Virginia. Two thousand two. It's two thousand twenty-four, and we still having the same problems. I still think we need to save our neighborhood schools. Need to keep our babies at home. Rich Net, I don't know what's going on. All my light-skinned cousins up there, they say they left the city of Newport News and moved to Yorktown for their children's safety. Now, it's a problem when we come up here and everybody is immune to, to, to the problems that's going on, and we can't get nothing done. And it's, it's sad. And, and Woodbury, you know, you've been up there a great little while. You came up there right after Phil Hamilton, you know, Phil Hamilton went to jail for inside trade with the ODU stuff. So we know we have some problems, you know, in this city. And then we had the school resource officer that also went to jail because he was up in our schools and he was putting the hits together, making the gangs, giving them guns and stuff like that, and his name is Mr. Hopston, and no one talks about him. He's in jail. We know we have a problem. We have American Civil War where the families don't even get along, right here in our community. We have Lightfoot Solomon Mischaw been trying for over a hundred and fifty years to put this thing together. We need to do better. We need five minutes, not three. We need a question and answering period. Y'all know this. Everybody that's born and raised here, y'all know what's going on. You've been knowing what's going on since nineteen fifty-eight with the merger of Newport News, Ward County, and Hampton. Come on there. Everybody can't leave, run to Hampton and act like y'all don't know what happened in Newport News because the cities are connected, right on Pear Avenue. I ain't come here for this, but it's heartbreaking when we still here twenty-two years later and we have the same issues. April is Arbor Day and Global Youth Service Day. That's our baby. That's when we plant our trees throughout our city in honor of our elders and some ancestors there. This year, Arbor Day, we're asking for this new council to piggyback Mayor Frank and put that proclamation together so that we can come together in peace at the Newsome House.
I will, if you send, if you send it to our.
I'm already on Ms. Mabel.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
It's on it. But I just wanted to say this to everybody in here. We need to do better.
Thank, thank you, ma'am.
We do. Sorry for your loss.
Our next item is new business. Mr. Manager.
None, sir.
City Attorney.
Nothing, sir.
City Clerk.
Real quickly, sir, I just want to wish the Girl Scouts of America happy anniversary. They celebrate their one hundred and twelfth anniversary today.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vick.
Well, I only have one thing. I want to give condolences to the family of, to August Bullock on the passing of his brother, and so I just wanted to, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Woodbury.
I wanted to, first of all, let all of you know that don't know already that we have a Sister Cities outfit here in Newport News, and that means that we now have a sister city in Japan, in China, in Germany, and in, uh, Ireland, that I was able to go and sign the papers last year. It's a very wonderful program. I encourage all of you to look into it. That will be another trip, I think, what, the reason that brought it to mind. We just had nineteen Japanese students, mostly high school and early college, to come, and they're leaving tomorrow, but I was able to interact with them last Friday, as was the mayor, and spend some time with them, and they are just, they were just a delightful group. So if you haven't thought about it, think about getting involved in that. I've been to Germany. I've been to China, and the only place I have, and I've been to Ireland, but I have not been to Japan, but it was wonderful to have them here. I also want to say that they were so interested in what goes on in our government. They were very invested. And when I look out, I don't see that many young people getting interested. And I hope as we start moving our city council meetings to other parts of the city that we will get more people, more young people, and I'm so glad the mayor's youth is here because this is one of your lessons, and to get involved. So thank you all very much for being here, for speaking up, and for letting us know what's on your mind. We're available at any time, and I appreciate so much your interest in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ely.
I just want to thank the mayor's youth commission for taking time out your busy schedule to come take part in local government, and also like to thank all the speakers who spoke tonight. Your voices were heard. Thank you.
Councilman Harris.
Uh, same, echo Councilman Ely's sentiments. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and also to the youth commission for being here, and that's all I have, Mayor Jones.
Thank you. Councilman Long.
I'd say the same. Um, thank you for everyone coming out tonight to speak, especially the mayor's youth commission. I served on mayor's youth commission twenty years ago.
I remember that.
That's right, and that's when I met, I met Councilwoman Woodbury back in that time period, so, um, like you're doing now, keep.
See what happens.
That's right. Stay involved and keep letting your voice be heard. That's all I have.
Vice.
Uh, real quick, of course, gonna shout out everyone for, for coming down. Special shout out to the mayor's youth commission. Uh, we, we had a good time in Atlanta during NLC. Uh, so, yep, especially, um, my friend over there who at the, at the Hawks game stood out. But I think we were supposed to, did we talk after NLC? Just get you off? Okay, good. Just want to make sure we did. But, uh, last thing, last shout out, Addison, right? So Addison used to be on the mayor's youth commission. And so now I see you got a, you know, your fancy drapes on right now, so thank you for all that you're doing, and I know you're doing amazing things, so shout out to everyone. Uh, quick shout out to Woodside, won the state title, but I know we're gonna honor them. The apprentice school is playing in the championship tomorrow for, for, uh, uh, I forget the name of the, the conference that they're in. Not the conference, I'm sorry. This is the national championship, excuse me. They're playing at Virginia State tomorrow, so please send your, your well wishes to them. Uh, and very quickly, that's all I got.
Great. I will wrap up. So it's been jam-packed, two weeks for the city. There's been so many different activities, and they gave me probably two hundred names to read as thank you. I will not do that. I will consolidate said list. But first of all, I know we had a very successful one-city marathon, and so to all of our sponsors, which is Bayport and Riverside, Centerra, Ferguson, Newport News Shipbuilding, we really do appreciate it, as well as our flat-out events and special event staff. It was an amazing half marathon and marathon, so we'll clap that for them. Additionally, we had our Allen Iverson honorary street naming last Tuesday. I thought that was an excellent event. The governor called last week and said, thank you so much for the invitation. Uh, thank you for Congressman Scott for coming down. But there were so many people that were involved. Uh, it's a two-page list, but you know who you are. We really appreciate it at the last minute. We will, going forward, Councilman Ely, we'll try to make sure that we don't give you a two- or three-week notice. I know communications was a little, uh, a little stressed out back there. But to everyone that was involved, thank you so much for all the work that went into the Allen Iverson event. And the last, I guess, the last two events was the inaugural State of the City. I thought that was an amazing presentation from the city staff, from city council. That was an opportunity for everyone to come out and to see, you know, what has been done over the past year and how we're going to build forward together. It's my intent that next year it's going to be free and or reduced for citizens, so we look forward to engaging more individuals who are able to come and see our State of the City. And finally, for the sort of shout-outs, I know we had our first iteration of midnight basketball this past weekend. I know there were several council members that were out, the Chief Drew. I know there were some fire department members as well. But I think that was great to see is, I think, two hundred, three hundred kids in middle school were able to come out. We were able to give them a safe space in which they could thrive, play some basketball, shoot hoops with the mayor. It really was a great time for the community at large. The last two things I'll say, so tonight I'm wearing my money suit because, uh, we received, I think, if you include the forty million dollars in the state budget, which is one of the largest investments ever in Newport News, we've also, uh, with the help of Owen and Jennifer and city staff, we were named as one of twenty-five cities in the Bloomberg Sustainable Cities. That's a two-hundred-million-dollar investment, uh, over three years for twenty-five cities. If you look at the cities, it's, it's what I'll call Tier One cities. It's, it's Atlanta, and it's Columbus, and it's all these really big cities, and you have Newport News. So what I've always said is, when I was, when I was running, anywhere in which there is a national discussion, Newport News deserves a seat at the table. So thank you to Owen, to Jennifer, to Allen, for everyone that was involved in that project. Great things are happening here in the city of Newport News. Stand adjourned. Thank you.